Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Lake County Behavioral Health Services and Mental Health Services Act Public Hearing for 2022 to 2023. My name is Camille Cummins. I am the Vice Chair for the Mental Health Advisory Board of Lake County. I'm stepping in for Julie Colfax, our amazing chair, who is out chaperoning students in Europe in a cooler climate. I'm so jealous. The Mental Health Advisory Board meets every Thursday of the month from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we want to encourage the community to join us. We thank you for your feedback. And now I'm going to introduce you to Scott Abbott, who was the Program Manager for Lake County Behavioral Health Services.
Thank you, Camille, and thank you very much for being here to host us. Being this is our annual MHSA update. It is required to be hosted by our Mental Health Advisory Board. And we're really excited that we have a good, strong advisory board. And we always haven't had that, but we do now. So we're really grateful we have them to be able to host this for us. And again, my name is Scott Abbott. I'm the Program Manager at the County Behavioral Health for the Mental Health Services Act and Housing. And welcome, want to welcome you, want to thank you for coming to be here. It's really important to have our community input in our annual updates. As you're, as you're probably aware, if you've heard me say it before, our plans are dependent upon community input and community feedback for what we're doing. Nothing really gets done without, without community and stakeholder input. So thank you so much for, for your dedication of being here today. Well, hopefully we'll get going through this as swiftly as possible and give you time at the end for, for some feedback and comments. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to, to our consultants who've been helping us all year long as they, as they've done. And that's, that's RDA and Aditi and Jamie are here representing them.
Great, thank you so much, Scott. And again, I want to say very warm welcome to everyone here. It's good to see you all. As Scott mentioned, my name is Aditi. I'm a Senior Consultant at RDA Consulting, and we've been working very closely with Lake County and several of you who've been a part of the annual update community planning process. So we're very grateful and thankful for your time here. So just as a quick way of introductions, this is very much as Scott and Camille mentioned, we're at the public hearing. And so before we get started, just to reiterate, you know, for those who are attending in person, if you could take out some time to fill in the sign-in sheet, and this is specifically for participants and stakeholders at the peer support centers. And in addition, you know, we are also requesting everyone to fill out the demographic form. Would really be very grateful if you could do so. And I know in the past, you know, folks were a little concerned about some of the line of questioning in the demographic forms. We want to recognize that and let you know that, you know, this is a part of the state mandate. So just, you know, let us know if you can fill those out, that would be, we would be most grateful. Thank you so much. And in addition, if you'd like to introduce yourselves on Zoom chat, please do so. You could add your name, your preferred pronouns, as well as the program you represent. Great, so I'm going to just kick us off and walk through the agenda and objectives for today. So let me, let me go over that in a, in a quick second. So one of the first things we'll, will kick us off today's conversation with is giving everyone an overview of the Mental Health Services Act. I think this might be repetitive for some because we've done this at previous community meetings. But again, it's part of the mandate for this presentation. And then we will also be talking about just really how we went about the annual update and the community planning process, where we engaged several of you and we were most grateful for your inputs. From there, we'll also then go on and talk about the prevention and early intervention evaluation reporting, because at this time's report, which we had publicly posted for a 30-day period, there was a component of the prevention and early intervention reporting. So we'll, we'll talk about that. In addition, we will provide a synopsis of the Community Needs Assessment Findings. And then we will also then really get to some of the program modifications, what came out of the Community Needs Assessment Findings. We will also talk about the budget and what, what that looks like. And we'll have Scott walk us through those pieces. And then finally, you know, the biggest, the most important piece of today is to really open this up for public comment. We will invite folks to come in and reflect and talk about their thoughts on the annual update. So related to the agenda, there are two key objectives for today's meeting. As you can see, the first one is us providing the update to the MHSA plan at Lake County. And this, as I said, was developed very much in collaboration with the stakeholders and the community. And then for the latter half of this meeting, we will provide an opportunities for stakeholders to provide public comment. So those are the two key objectives of today. So just some quick meeting tips. You know, for those of us, for those who are attending in person, and this is mostly at the peer support centers, we have a point person coordinator who's going to be helping us manage the Zoom meetings as well as facilitate attendance and participation. If you're joining us virtually, you know, if, to the extent possible, would be great if you could find a more quiet, distraction-free location and keep yourselves muted, that would be very helpful. If you have any substantive comments or questions or any kind of feedback, feel free to use the chat function on Zoom. In addition, we also have, if you scroll to the bottom of your screen on the Zoom, there's a raise hand function. So if folks want to provide or ask any clarifying questions, feel free to do so. These are just some meeting tips to, to get us all started. All right, so I'm actually going to go ahead and start talking about the Mental Health Services Act, the sort of training and education piece. And like I said, I think this might be repetitive for a few, few of you, but we're going to go ahead and provide a brief overview. So what is MHSA? MHSA essentially stands for the Mental Health Services Act. This was passed as a part of Proposition 63 in November of 2004. It's, the funding is basically a 1% tax on those who earn over $1 million. And the primary objective was to expand and transform our mental health services. So related to that, you could see these five buckets here. There are these key components that comprise of the Mental Health Services Act. Everything from the focus on wellness, recovery and resilience, to ensuring the services are culturally competent, that the clients and family are very much at the heart of services, ensuring, also ensuring that the service experience is very much integrated and that it's done in collaboration with the community. So those are some key elements of what the Mental Health Services Act entail. This is really an overview of the different buckets of the Mental Health Services Act. So you could see, you know, right at the top of this page, you have CSS, which stands for Community Services and Supports, which make up a majority of the funding of MHSA. And this is really meant to provide outreach and direct services for those with serious emotional disturbances or serious mental illness. And this is really across the lifespan. Then we're looking at a second bucket of the MHSA, which is PEI, that stands for Prevention and Early Intervention. And this is really focused on preventing and intervening at the early onset of mental health. In addition, there are funds that are allotted to the INN, which stands for Innovation. This is really testing out any new or promising approaches that will focus on improving mental health outcomes. You also have WEP, which stands for Workforce Education and Training, which is meant to sort of improve and strengthen the mental health public workforce. And then you also have CFDN, which stands for Capital Facilities and Technology Needs, which is very much focused on providing infrastructure support. So these are the different components and buckets of MHSA for those who are joining us. So right here, you will see a list of all of Lake County's MHSA programs under the different buckets that I just introduced to you in the previous slide. I won't go over this list, but I'm going to keep it up for, you know, for 30 seconds so that folks can glance and look over this list. So as you can see, it's, you know, we have the CSS component, the PEI component, the INN, the CFDN and the WET component. So let me just keep this up for a second and then hopefully folks recognize this and this all looks fairly familiar.
And this list will come up later as we talk about any modifications.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Scott. Yeah. Great. So for those of you who are interested in learning more about the, just really about what MHSA is, we have this link in here. I'm going to have my colleague drop the link in the chat as well for those of you who are interested to find out more about MHSA. So as it relates to, you know, as we just heard about MHSA, I'm now going to also pivot and talk about what this annual update process has been like and really what, how community and the stakeholders have really been at the heart of this entire annual update. So what is the purpose and the intention behind the annual update? It's essentially to provide an update to the adopted MHSA three-year plan. This was created back in 2020, which was for FY 2020 to 2023. So this year is the last annual update of the three-year plan. We're actually going to be switching gears and moving forward. We're going to begin the three-year planning process again. But what this, the objective of the annual update is to really provide program status and service accomplishments in this past year in addition to any kind of modifications or changes that have come out of the annual update process. And, you know, as I said, it's very much been community-led and community-driven. And that, you know, the intention behind putting together the annual update is to ensure meaningful stakeholder participation, because we really have turned to the stakeholders to be folks who have the lived experiences and have the subject matter expertise around the kind of services that, that they've been receiving at Lake County and what they'd like to see moving forward. This, as you can see, is a list of all of the MHSA stakeholders. So, you know, it really, it's sort of a broad spectrum that it covers, right from, we have consumers of mental health services down to providers, as well as other affiliated partners such as education agencies, social service agencies. So this is really a list of the kind of stakeholders who are part of Lake County's MHSA process. In addition, I'm going to also highlight some key roles and responsibilities to, to kick us off. To begin with, you know, stakeholders are, like I said, at the, very much at the heart of this entire process, where they share their perspectives and lived experiences about the, the mental health services at Lake County. In addition, we have the Behavioral Health Services Department, which involves Scott and his team, who are entrusted with the implementation of behavioral health services in Lake County. Then we also have the Mental Health Advisory Board with us. We have Camille here, who's representing the board, who essentially, they play more of an advisory role. For MHSA at Lake County, there's the Board of Supervisors, who are going to be reviewing and approving the annual update. This is going to be in August, and I'm going to show you that in a minute, just talking about the timeline. And then there's us, RDA, where we're just helping facilitate this entire process. So these are just some key roles and responsibilities I wanted to highlight. So here, you could see, this is really a timeline of all the MHSA planning activities. So, you know, if you could see highlighted in yellow, that's the phase that we're at, which is Phase Four, which is in the plan development phase. For those of you who have been a part of these meetings, we've completed the previous three phases. As I said, for this, for this last month, we had put up the annual update as a public posting for a 30-day period. And today is the public hearing. Once that's done, the, the intention is to incorporate all of the public comment, and then we will be updating the report and finalizing and presenting it to the Board of Supervisors, which will happen in August. And that essentially will earmark the end of this year's annual update. So that's kind of where we're at with this process.
And this is the, yeah, the, the last year of the current plan.
Correct, that's right, Scott. Perfect. Okay, so I'm actually just going to go ahead and, you know, I apologize if this was really expedient. We definitely wanted to just give everyone an overview. And hopefully folks have heard me speak about this a few times previously. So again, as a part of, you know, the MHSA requirements, we are required to launch a quick stakeholder poll, just in terms of getting a sense for how well you, you know, your level of understanding for what I just covered, which was the overview of MHSA, as well as the annual update and community planning process. So what I'm going to do now is actually launch the poll for those who are present virtually. If you could just take out two minutes to complete the poll, that would be great. In addition, for those who are at the peer support centers, if I could request the coordinators to just get a rough estimate by a show of hands for the participants, that we just really want to get a sense of their understanding. So let me go ahead and launch the poll. All right. Oops. I, I apologize, I think there's a typo. The last rating option should say strongly disagree. My, my apologies for that. I was clearly looking for more agreement, Scott. All right, we almost, we have 73%. Any other? For folks who are joining us, we just launched a poll about the MHSA training and education piece. If I could have you chime in and respond to the poll, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, 80%. And for folks at the peer support centers, do we have a sense, are we taking an estimate from our participants? Okay, I think it looks like that's happening. Great. All right, well, thank you all. Thank you so much for your participation. It's much appreciated. So I'm going to actually go ahead and end the poll. Thanks so much for chiming in. And just quick share of results. And again, I apologize that there was a typo in the last component, but it looks like most folks are in agreement that they have a reasonable understanding of MHSA as well as the annual update and community planning process. So we appreciate, thank you so much for your inputs. The two people, okay, great. Thank you so much. Thanks, thanks for reporting from the peer support centers. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, Laura. Hopefully they'll return. Okay. All right. Okay, so now, for just a couple of minutes, this is the third section of the agenda that I talked about. We will be talking about the PEI, that's the Prevention and Early Intervention Evaluation Reporting. And I'm going to turn it to my colleague Jamie, who's going to walk us through the different pieces.
Okay, thanks, Aditi. Okay, so as some of you may know, in fiscal year 1819, the MHSOAC, which is the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, they're the body that kind of oversees implementation of the MHSA. They updated the PEI reporting requirements to include evaluation of PEI programs. And part of the reason that they did this is to kind of understand how and what PEI programs are doing, and then also identify potentially effective strategies that could be used elsewhere in the state to kind of improve prevention and early intervention efforts. So the PEI evaluation, it kind of follows a similar structure as the, the MHSA plans. So there's an annual report that's due every year, and that's really asking about information for the previous fiscal year, kind of consumer served demographic information and accomplishments, and then also some implementation information. And then there's a three-year evaluation report, which is asking about information for the previous three fiscal years, as well as some more outcome information to really understand the program impact. So the introduction of this kind of, this new evaluation for PEI programs, it's been a big deal, it's been a big shift for pretty much all PEI programs, not just in Lake County, but across the entire state. So LCBS and RDA has been working with the PEI programs over the last couple of years to kind of strengthen PEI reporting, and will be working more with all of the programs in this upcoming year to continue to strengthen that outcome reporting. But we wanted to let you know that this, this year's annual update includes LCBH's first PEI three-year evaluation report for fiscal years 1819 through fiscal year 2021. And for folks that are interested, this is an Appendix F of the annual updates. We wanted to just kind of let you know about that. And then next slide. And so we also just wanted to let you know, so similar to the MHSA, where there's different components, within PEI, there's also different kind of service areas. So there's the prevention service area, early intervention, access and linkage to treatment for folks that have identified serious mental illness, improved access to mental health services for underserved populations, outreach for increasing recognition of early signs of mental illness, stigma and discrimination reduction, and suicide prevention. And so all counties are intended to have PEI programs that kind of cover each of these different service areas. In small counties, they're actually allowed to have, one program can touch on multiple service areas so they can be integrated in that way. And programs are also intended to kind of implement the following strategies of increasing access and linkage to treatment, increasing access to mental health services, and then utilizing strategies that are non-stigmatizing and non-discriminatory. But the reason this is also important that we wanted to let you know is that each of these different PEI service areas also has slightly different outcome reporting requirements for the PEI evaluation. Next slide. And so this is just a quick table that's kind of showing each of the different programs that were in fiscal year 2122 that Lake had. And so we have the program names on the left, as well as the service areas. And then, as you can see, some of the programs, like the Peer Support Recovery Centers, as well as the statewide, regional and local projects. So those are those integrated programs that are kind of covering multiple different PEI service areas. And so again, we really just kind of wanted to let you know that this is something that Lake has been working on, and that's kind of a newish addition to the MHSA reporting process. And it's been a big effort and kind of will continue to be in the next year or so. So we just wanted to kind of alert you to that. And again, there's more information in the annual update. And then that PEI three-year report is in Appendix F of the report, if you want to check that out. Scott, did you have anything else that you wanted to add around the PEI evaluation reporting?
No, other than this is its own component within our, within our plan and can be, anyone is free to look at more in depth of what we're doing. One thing that we are for sure in doing is working on improving our efforts in this area to be in compliance. We need to gather more outcome type of data of these prevention efforts. And so over this next year, we'll be spending a lot of effort in bettering our, our efforts in this area.
Thank you so much, Jamie, for the overview. Thanks, Scott, for chiming in. All right, I'm going to just move us along. So moving from the PEI evaluation reporting piece, I'm going to now talk about the Community Needs Assessment Findings. So just to provide everyone an overview, this is sort of a snapshot of folks who participated in the different activities that we had planned. So as you can see right here, the table on the left, we had the first community meeting, which was planned in February, where we had about 58 folks participate. This was really a hybrid meeting format. So this again included our participation from the peer support centers. We also launched a community survey, and we had about 88 people participate, which was really wonderful. And we appreciate the enthusiastic numbers. We, in addition, conducted focus groups. These were mostly again at the peer support centers in March of this year. And we primarily wanted to hear from folks who are receiving services at the peer support centers. But in addition, we also heard very valuable feedback from the providers. And then we also had our second community meeting in April, where we had 67 folks participate. So that brings our total up to 237. So it's a pretty robust number, and we really, you know, tried to hear from multiple perspectives and used different kinds of, different kinds of tools to gather that information. So just thinking about the affiliation of our stakeholders. As you could see, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of consumers, as well as those who are family members of consumers. In addition, you know, we have about 16% of providers who were part of these conversations, as well as those who identify as other community stakeholders. So this is just to give everyone a snapshot of our participants. So in addition, we, you could see right here, this is, as I said, there were 88 folks who had taken the survey. So this is just going to sort of give you a quick snapshot of the survey findings. But essentially, the biggest takeaways are that people, you know, felt, were, were pretty satisfied with the kind of services that they received from Lake County's mental health services. And they also sort of were very happy with working with the providers. However, there are still some challenges that folks mentioned in terms of provision of services during the pandemic and that there's an area for improvement there. So that's the sort of key highlight from the survey. I'm also going to give everyone a very brief overview of the key strengths. And then following this, we're going to talk about some of the challenges, as well as the strategies. To start off with the strengths, one of the biggest things we heard really across the board was about how peer support centers have been a great addition to Lake County's Behavioral Health Services. And you could sort of see that in, in this little call-out box, where we have a quote from one of our consumers, where, you know, folks describe peer support centers as providing a sense of safety, support, as well as a very important resource hub. In addition, we also heard folks talking about how telehealth and virtual services have now become an option for consumers, which has been really well-received. And that, you know, the LCBS staff have been noted as being very supportive. Here are some of the challenges that came out of our needs assessment process. COVID is the big one. Unfortunately, that still continues to be a little bit of a challenge. And so, you know, COVID's had an impact on the kind of services that are being provided, as well as has posed accessibility issues. In addition, you know, many folks described stopping as an inherent issue, especially around retention and training. You know, housing is, we, we're all aware that in Lake County, that is a problem. And in fact, that is true for a lot of the state of California. In addition, timeliness of services, especially connecting consumers to other providers and other behavioral health providers, has been posed as a challenge. In addition, you know, accessibility, folks have mentioned aspects such as stigma, lack of awareness, geography, and the inaccessibility that it poses are some of the things that continue to be a challenge. And here on the orange part of the screen, you'll see that these are some highlighted populations in need. So we have homeless individuals, youth and families, family members of folks with mental illness, the older adult population, as well as communities of color, especially because they have told us that they don't subscribe to the Western medical model. Here is some, you know, here really, again, I'm going to go with this in very briefly, because we talked about this pretty extensively at our second community meeting. But this really provides an overview of the kind of strategies that came out of the conversations that we had with stakeholders. So the first one is talking about increasing service awareness, outreach and access. So really, are there opportunities to educate potential consumers or to really spread the word about the kind of services that are on offer at Lake County? This includes things like, is there other opportunities to devise or automate? You know, things like sending appointment reminders, developing pamphlets at peer support centers, especially because we hear that peer support centers are being very well-received, expanding mobile services amongst others. The other area that folks highlighted was this need to improve service coordination, because, you know, integrated service experience is very critical to MHSA. So is there a way to enhance provider networks, especially because folks highlighted timeliness of services as being a challenge? Improving accessibility to those services is another area, as well as ensuring service equity and consistency, especially across the peer support centers. um especially across the peer support centers. Um some other uh proposed strategies include the need for new services and interventions. One of the biggest uh pieces we heard was um the the idea of developing a mobile crisis response team, which is without police intervention. Um then also including uh, you know, opening a wellness center for children and youth in the city of Clear Lake. Um and also uh strategies such as paying stipends for community members as as well as agencies of color to share their perspectives. Um then there were also services for specific populations that were highlighted. So things like affordable low-income housing, providing um in-home assistance to older adults, as well as providing supports to families um on how to support their loved one with serious mental illness. Um and then finally, one of the strategies that uh folks highlighted was about around workforce education and training. This was really related to some of the staffing challenges that we heard coming out of the community planning process. So this includes improving, expanding um the W E D incentives, creating a more diverse staffing pipeline, as well as expanding the overall pipeline of counselors and therapists in the region. So these were just, um these were, as you could see, a really, this is a very robust conversation. And these were a lot of the strategies that we heard from the community stakeholders. All right, uh that ends that section, Scott. I'm gonna now turn it over to you because we're now getting into the proposed uh program modifications.
Hey. Um so this is the slide I was, it was up before about what uh what programs currently exist um within within our MHSA programming um under the major components right there. And the ones that are um bolded are what we're looking at specifically. Did I least want to mention that we're gonna be looking at doing some modifications on um you know, based on on some of our community feedback that we've received. Um so next slide, I think really touches in on on each one of those changes. So uh for the peer support centers, um that is as has been mentioned, one of our um highlights of of our MHSA program is really seen as a in an important component. Um it, our peer support centers do a lot of different types of services. Particularly, um not only the supporting with with the those that are are homeless, um those that are in the community with with mental health conditions that um are looking for alternatives to to um the treatment, the traditional treatment. Um being able to provide peer support by by our peer support specialists that we have. Um they they do quite a bit and they also, as as you probably were, focus on on a different populations within the community, particularly your underserved populations. And so, you know, one of the things that we'll be, we'll be doing is is increasing funding um for our peer support centers. And also at the same time, um um kind of launching off our outreach and engagement from the peer support centers. Although, you know, that's kind of when the natural um things that our peer support centers do is outreach and engagement because they're out there in the community. They're, you know, they're they're separate facilities from from our clinics. Um and so they, you know, kind of act as outreach and engagement just by themselves. But we've also, as as mentioned in previous plans, have have um been wanting to to hire more outreach workers that specifically will be going out into community. And we're finally at that point now um that we're doing that. We we've hired um that we we have, we've already had outreach and prevention specialists for um which is Michael and and uh and Kendra, which work a lot with youth and families. Um we've also just hired two new ones and Helica, who is gonna be working with our our tribal populations and Thomas, who's gonna be uh working with our older adult populations. And we're gonna be hiring um another one um hopefully soon for for our Latino populations. And so they'll be doing a lot more outreach to be working with our peer support specialists um within our peer s- peer centers in this effort. And uh we've gotten um an outreach van to be able to to um really go out and and meet the people where we're at, be able to bring supplies. Um you know, such as blankets and and hygiene kits uh to to those that are around the community that are in need. And so we're gonna be, you know, ramping up that effort quite a bit. And that's why we've kind of separated it as as its own program. That program also will develop uh into somewhat of a a a a mobile crisis response. Um and that they'll be able to go out and at least investigate um what, you know, a situation that might exist that's been reported, you know, by either law enforcement or or just the concerned community member about about someone that that, you know, maybe is having difficulties um that needs to be, needs some help. And and they can go and assess, maybe help that person, that maybe it's all that's necessary. But if there, if there's more than that, then they can, they can get uh our our crisis team involved to to assist. So um you know, we're, we're really gonna be kind of ramping up um those efforts in the community. Um if you, you you might have seen our outreach van out and about, it's a, it's a really uh um good-looking van, uh very colorful, um with a nice picture of of Canuck Day on it and and Clear Lake. And and uh we're hoping that people will recognize it and and know what it means when when they see it. Um we've also uh this past year have hired a wet coordinator. Uh one of the things that was that was noticed uh in 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 the needs assessment is is, you know, the issues we're having of 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 having enough staff, um hiring and retaining staff. And so the our wet coordinator coordinator will will be um really trying to address that specifically um to to be able to to do this, that, be able to recruit more and retain more staff. And we'll be doing that using using our workforce education training funding, both in a regional effort, um which is, which is more geared toward um helping higher end uh tho- those in education, getting their their licenses, getting their um you know, graduate education so they can, they can um stay here and and work. But we're also gonna be spending quite a bit in in local funds, trying to recruit um among among, you know, local high schools, community colleges, um help people that you might have an interest in the field to to kind of grow that interest in the field. It's, you know, studies have shown that, you know, if you can, if you can, if you can grow your own within the community, you know, they'll have those roots in the community and they're likely to stay in the community more than 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 trying to import um people from outside the communities. So we're, we're really trying to grow those within as well, looking, you know, looking years down the road in in that process. Um and so we're, we're excited about that program and then having, having a new wet coordinator to really address that full-time. Um something else disrelated is our, is our peer support certification process. This is a uh the result of of um of a few things. One is the changing law, which has allowed peer certification. Um also, there there's changes in in Medi-Cal through a process that's called Cal AIM, which is emphasizing um more, more peer support um participation in in treatment. And so we're gonna, we're gonna be having um it it also kind of rewards our peer support staff too with certification, recognizing that the efforts that they're doing are significant and and important in recovery. And so having a certification process with that will will um will support that. And so we're, we're really um working at addressing that today to to do that. Um I think, let's see, is that covered? Is there in the six sliders or I think this kind of covers it?
Yes, absolutely, Scott. This covers all the program modifications.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Yeah.
We're getting something.
Sure. I can move us on to the budget and the fund base. Okay, great.
Yeah, this will, this ties in directly to what I just mentioned. If we go to the budget part.
Sure.
Um so th- these are the 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 areas, C S, CSS is community services and supports, P I prevention, early intervention. Uh INN is innovation and um usually, the, we also have cap facilities in there. Um oh, well, I'm sorry, you have it on the side, sorry.
Yeah.
Cap facilities and and wet also emerge from from CSS. We can use up to twenty percent um of CSS for for workforce education and training. And um cap capital facilities and technical needs, um which are, you know, buildings and computers and things like that. Um and so this is, this is the the set um amounts that we can use um dictated by regulation for for these efforts. Next slide. And so these are those, those areas which I just mentioned, uh broken down by by our funding. Now, this is the, this the totals right here um in the actual report um is the breakdown of how each each one of these areas is is spent. And um I don't particularly want to go through that because it's, I could be here all morning going through that. Um but these are the totals. This also, so you know, um we receive about approximately this same amount of money um in MHSA revenue per year. Um we have five years to spend each each year. And so we, we do have um unspent funds from previous years, which are carried over each each year. And as I said, we have five years to spend any particular year. Um so it's always, you know, kind of a, kind of a carryover process. Um and so this represents what our our budget is for for right now. Um if you're interested in how the funding is eventually spent on our webpage, we also have our revenue and expense report, which is also produced every year. And you can review that and see how how the funding is spent as well. Next, next slide. Okay. So.
So before you, uh before we open it up for public comment, first of all, thank you so much, Scott. Thanks for that overview. Um these are just, again, a few meeting tips um around how to contribute to the discussion. Um you can see right here on the slide is we're trying to um stick to about a three-minute time limit per person about their public comments. You know, this is really, the intention is to ensure that we can um hear from everyone and we want to be respectful of that. Um we, of course, won't cut people off, but we, I would just request everyone to be a little mindful of the the time uh that you'd spend on providing a public comment. Um and just thinking about different ways of contributing to the discussion, um you know, in the computer, if you're joining us virtually and even those uh folks who are at the peer support centers. Um do click on the participant's icon and select the raise hand uh function. For those who are joining us on the phone, uh you could do a similar raise hand uh function by pressing star nine. Uh we also have the Zoom chat where feel free to add your comment uh or any reflections that you might have. And then we also have Scott's email address down here. Um so definitely feel free to send us an email um with your public comments. So um, all right, I'm just gonna.
You know, this, this real quick, I um I need to if you could go back a couple of slides.
Oh, sure thing. Yeah. Um which one, Scott?
One more.
This one?
Actually, two more.
Okay. Oops, this?
There you go.
Okay.
Uh one thing I forgot to mention, um which I was just reminded of, is um we have on there toward the bottom plans to renovate and remodel the the Clear Lake Clinic. Just want to mention that real quick. Um we have uh cap facility funds which are dedicated toward um up upgrading our our clinic in in South Shore. And we haven't spent those yet, yet. They, they originally had them set aside at the beginning of this three-year plan. And we, we haven't uh spent, spent those yet. Um and we're also looking at um using additional funding to to assist with that, to to help that. And so I wanted to ask um Elise Jones, who's our our deputy director of administration, if she could talk about that particular effort because we, we need to talk about that for that particular grant and it relates to MHSA at the same time. Be there, Elise?
I do see Elise on the call.
Yeah.
Elise, are you there?
Hang on. Okay, well, um she'll probably pop on in just a second.
Okay.
But but let, let's go back to to the um, okay, she is, she is just slightly busy. Let's just go to the public comment and she'll, she'll chime in when when she can.
Okay, that sounds good, Scott. Thank you. Great, so this is, yeah, go, oh.
Sorry about that.
There you go. Hi, Elise. Yeah, go ahead. Let me go back to that if that's helpful. There you go. I think, but yeah, we, you're gonna be talking about the plans to renovate and remodel the clearly clinic, so.
That is correct. So um California counties have uh the opportunity to apply for behavioral health um improvement funding. And primarily, this is to facilitate expansion of behavioral health facilities and um revitalization. And so I would guess many of you are aware that our clinic in Clear Lake is um in need of some repair um aesthetically and and structural issues as well. And so we applied for planning grant funding to uh plan essentially how we're going to approach the revitalization and expansion of that clinic. Um we simply actually don't have enough office space and space in general to to expand and hold all of the staff and do all of the services that we need to do. And so um we're very excited about that opportunity. So that planning grant period uh will conclude at the end of this calendar year, at which time we will be eligible to apply for the additional behavioral health um infrastructure uh funding. Um and the reason why we're bringing it to the MHSA stakeholder meeting today is, is, and I apologize if this is already stated because there is a match of funding required for these grant uh monies. And we will be utilizing MHSA funds as a match to uh revitalize and expand that that clinic. So at this point, as part of a stakeholder engagement process for this planning grant, I really would love to hear um people can put in the chat or just uh raise your hand or whatever. Um what do you, what would you like to see? I mean, in the Clear Lake clinic? Um what do you think the needs are there that aren't currently being addressed? And it can be wild, it can be whatever you want, uh but what would be your wish list for that Clear Lake clinic? If you've been there and you know the building and and the admittedly sorry state of it?
Yeah, I'd love to contribute, um just because I've been housed at the South Shore office and continue to be housed there um for the past six, seven years within children's services. While kids wait for services, they're often running in the very front of the building um near the cars, um which kind of concerns me just because, I mean, they're children, they're gonna run and I encourage physical activity. Um but possibly anything to kind of make it more of a safer area for them to be able to do that. Um or any, any way to kind of make it as kid-friendly in the front. Like even like around the children's area while they're waiting, something that they can do. Um because kids are gonna run and it just, it, my heart always gets a beat whenever they run out of their car and then they're trying to run back to their car and then there's cars coming back and forth. Even fencing or uh an area where they can run, you know, an area where it's more um kid-friendly or even like a play area or a sandbox, anything to kind of entertain them. Um because another thing is that kids have siblings. So meanwhile, one brother is or sister is waiting for their, you know, sibling to get out of therapy or other services, then, you know, again, there's, there's children. So I guess that would be um you know, my input, you know, anything kid-friendly or anything we can do to make it um safer for kids and families.
Okay. Maybe even something like. Uh. I know there are two lobbies in the building. And one of them is dedicated for children's services to have a separate space where they wait for appointments. And there are some things in there. It's pretty bare bones. Some maybe even like an expanded lobby that has more of a a play kind of space. And possibly an outdoor area that, um, you know, some benches or covered tables or something um and secured. I don't know.
Okay, right now that you can only have, it it's really difficult for two families to wait. Um. And I've seen, especially in the heat right now, I've seen some families wait outside. Well, you know, there was families inside and even the the heating and cooling is a little off inside, but it's way better than having families wait outside, especially if they if we're talking about littles.
Yeah. Thank you, Zaki. I do see. A comment from Israel Griffin in the chat. Does the expansion in the Clear Lake Clinic include the Pathways Program? I assume you're speaking to the hub model. And no, it wouldn't. Um. The Pathways Program. Is uh being managed by Adventist Health. Scott, is that your understanding of this question or Israel, would you like to clarify?
Sure, is when you say pathways program, are you referring to the pathways pub? I know there's a number of programs that call themselves pathways.
Okay. So. Right, because that's through Adventist Health.
Right, the pathways program. That's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up, because that is that's something that originated from, I must say, innovation project. And that is um also continuing. Um it is. Continue to be funded by the Hope Person Care Grant. And I'm I'm still kind of watching out for that as well. Um. We have contracted that to to Adventist Health. And um it is proceeding. We are having uh another meeting on that next week at this time. And if you if you notice that in the in the emails that we sent out, uh I really encourage everyone who's here to to. Go to that meeting um for an update of how that that particular project is 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 working. Okay, great.
Any other feedback? Not seeing any raised hands or any messaging in the chat.
If if you have any other ideas, you can you can send them to me. You know, you you saw my email here now, and of course, I'll share them with 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 Elise in in our planning process, but. Or looking, you know, if you just happen to, you know, stop by there or remember when you were there. And you you see some things that you would that need improvement. Let let us know. We we did do some. We actually had another innovation project earlier. A number of years ago about this very subject and and received quite a bit of feedback from that as a result. And so we'll, we're sure we'll be applying that. Um as well, but any any other things that you you can think of were were obviously more willing to to listen to them.
I do see a question from Derek in the chat regarding the wet coordinator position. Are you able to see that, Scott?
Um. Is the white coordinator position working internally within behavior health? Or is it a service for people in the community? It's actually a within within uh behavioral health. But um, you know. Our image to say is for the community. So if there there's a question or anything that that. You are coordinator can can assist with, we're more than willing to to entertain those ideas of of being able to help our community any way that we can, particularly when it comes to, um, you know, the mental health. Provider shortage that to California is in. Okay, is there, you know, this kind of in general now. You know, you you. We've we've, you know, gone through this process for the last six months. Which which Aditi has has explained. And you know, this is kind of we're at the kind of the the culmination of those those efforts, you know, with the plan that's that's written. If you had a chance to review it or, you know, page through it, or, you know, you were listening on on this uh particular uh webinar. So now we're just looking if you have any any feedback, any additional feedback that you that you that you that you might have. We're we're really interested in in getting that will be. You know, recording everything that that is said so that we will will be paying attention to it. Um. And so if you if you have any kind of feedback, we really would welcome it.
Scott, I'm also happy to continue keeping this slide up in case folks want to react to this specifically. Yeah.
Or, you know, you you can you can page back to the the other slide too, just. Which shows all the programs.
Sure. This this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the other thing I just, you know, as I'm waiting for someone to say something is I I I want to talk about our current innovation project that we're working on too. As I didn't mention that previously. Um. This is a project that it's been going on for this past year and will go on for another few years. Um, which is. Trying to improve our full service partnership. Program that we have. Our full service partnership program is our largest um program that we have under MHS A total. It is, you can see, it's under the Community Services and Supports. It's the third one down. Um. But it's it's our largest program that that we have. And by regulation, um it's supposed to be over fifty percent of CSS. And if you remember that slide of funding. You know, seventy six percent of MHS A is CSS, so half of that is for FSP program. And that's the FSP program, Full Service Partnership Program, is the program which helps um through through kind of innovative ways uh helping those who who are the most vulnerable. The the severely mentally ill. And and people whose whose um functional supports or functional abilities um are impaired because of their their mental illness. Um. And so it's. And which is a is set aside funding to specifically address those and those those will address um more intensive type of treatments. But also doing things able to provide the traditional treatment can't do, which is things like um housing supports or. You know, other other particular needs that that can't be usually fulfilled. Um. Such as maybe if they need extra, you know, food or or or, you know, help with a with a bill or something that can help a person in their recovery. Which is, you know, what what the whole program is designed is to help people. Um gain some level of of recovery. I must just say it has a strong belief in the idea that everyone has the ability to recover from from. Their mental illness. And um that, of course, that recovery can varies individual by individual, but. Um. We strongly believe that everyone has the ability to to improve. And I want to say is designed to to help people in in those efforts. So going back to our innovation project, um because it is such an important program. Um. There is actually a multi-county effort to design to to improve it. Um. Our clinical staff or clinical team leads are participating in the project. And we are working with a working organization that's called a Cal MHS A uh to to work with other work with the counties to develop a stronger program, particularly when it's it's based on data. Um. And so we're. That that effort is is proceeding forward.
We we have a, go ahead, Kim.
Hi, good morning. Um, Scott, I have a real quick question. With I was just on a call yesterday about nine eight eight. Does any of this address? The the new. Um. Emergency line for mental mental health and and uh, you know. Suicide prevention. I don't know. I I can't even use the words that I'm thinking, but does any of this, does it fit into any of these categories? Is their funding set aside for that or is or maybe maybe behavioral health's not the owner? I'm not sure.
At least you do you have any response to that? I know that our our director is um working with other agencies in in the county uh to develop what the ninety eight response will be for for our county.
Yes, we will have a nine eight eight response. It's currently under development. I know that. Our director Todd Metcalf is working with North North Coast EMS and some other uh it's a regional effort essentially, because we're small counties.
Great.
Uh to to be announced.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, Kim, um they have an effective rollout date of that to um. Well, actually, if you call nine eight eight right now, um it does work, but it it again is just directing you to the suicide prevention hotline. And I'm actually um in a meeting on Friday with North Coast EMS to to sort of figure out where this is going. It's still very half baked, so. Um, I I will uh probably be bringing this to the County Board of Supervisors in the coming weeks, just to sort of explain what's happening, because it 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 hasn't been put together very well, so. More to come.
Yeah, you know, Todd, the the on that call, it was even people as in the state level were saying the same thing that there's concerns, you know. But but with the rollout on Saturday, it was kind of like coming up so fast. Um. I just, I just wasn't sure if there was planning for that, but you got you're all over it. I'm I'm appreciative.
Yeah, and it's and Kim, thank you. And yes, it's it is true at the state level. We're all still kind of scrambling and confused, so. Um, I'm hoping to get more clarification on on uh, well, tomorrow, that's Friday, tomorrow. Uh around how this is supposed to work uh for our county, so I will I will keep you in the loop.
And and I'm sure as as you know, the more is developed will be will be. You know, there'll be press releases and so forth, instructions to to the community of how how it will be working.
Absolutely, Scott. You know, I'm all over press releases.
I know you. Thanks for being here, Todd. Appreciate your your jumping in there.
I'm 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 so sorry. Um, I'm I'm actually tuned into another meeting right now. Um. So I'm um, yes, but I'm glad I was able to jump in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other other questions or comments, feedback? Surely you want to hear me talk all the time.
Yeah. I also just chimed in in the chat, especially for participants at the peer support centers. Do we have anyone? Uh that like that like to pose a comment or question?
Uh. Can you hear me at the circle here? There's a question I had one. Participants about the mini grant. When is that available?
The mini grants?
Yeah.
Okay, the mini grants are um twenty five hundred dollar grants that we offer, um, you know, for for prevention type of efforts uh to any any community member or community organization uh that has like an event or or a, you know, a small need that that they need support with. Those are usually offered uh in April. Um of every year for for the the following year.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet. Thanks, Thomas. Any other other comments? Okay. Well, we don't, we don't have to hold you here. If you if you do have other comments or something else comes up that, you know, after the meeting that you you're you're thinking of, you know, please just just let me know. Um, I'm I'm here at Behavioral Health. You can either call me or um my email address is scott dot abbott at lake county ca dot gov. Um. And so, you know, please, please contact us and and uh we will, we 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 listen to to all concerns and feedback. Um, you know, those concerns and feedback really go into, you know, building our plan. And and any kind of things that we do to 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 highlight it or 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 modify it. Um. So, you know, please let let us know. In the meantime, you know, I I just really want to thank. You you being here. Uh, I appreciate the time that you you've taken out to to be here and to listen. Um, and and recognize the 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 work that, you know, all the people that go into making these programs happen that you see before you. You know, really trying to improve our community and help those that are there most at need, most most vulnerable. Um. And so the this is a, these are these are great projects, great programs. I'm thankful for for all of them. And I'm thankful for for, again, for for your uh concern. Um. And if there's, if there isn't anything else, the the D D or are are we are we done?
Yeah, we just a quick overview of next steps, Scott, but yes, pretty much. That's totally fine. Sounds good. Great. So. Yeah, absolutely. I I want to definitely allow for any last comments or thoughts that folks have before. We talk about next steps. I don't want to shoot anybody down.
I know that there are several community members that just couldn't make it to this meeting, but um is there a timeframe to get you any like written correspondence?
Well, um. As soon as possible, I guess, you know, because what we're trying to do now is is any comments that come from today, we want to turn around, get in, get into the the plan. And make whatever, you know, hopefully by now we're talking pretty pretty small adjustments. And then um the next the next step is is the D D head up there is going to the the board of supervisors next month. Then, of course, we have to, it it takes a couple of weeks to get on that schedule. And so we're actually kind of at a a little bit of a rush to get uh to get things going. So short answer, that was not a short answer, but the short answer is as soon as possible.
We got it. Makes sense. Thank you.
Any others, any other thoughts?
Uh, again, in the circle, may it mine Janet Taylor here wants to know again.
Well, how are you going to educate and um put together the program, the care program? I believe somebody presented at the supervisors on Tuesday. Unfortunately, I missed the presentation. So um what steps are you taking at this point?
I just saw Todd unmute his microphone.
Janet, um, I gave a presentation to the Board of Supervisors uh this week about Care Court. And we have time. Um, we are not in the initial pilot county rollout. So we will not really have to do much of anything until um potentially July twenty twenty four, but um I I I'm we're still, it's it's one of those moving targets, kind of like nine eight eight, that we're still sort of figuring it out. And as I shared, um and please feel free to go back and watch my presentation, um if you can't fall asleep tonight. But um it it it's um, it's still another one of those that the state has declared this initiative, but they have not finalized their policies and procedures yet. So. Um. And I I don't know, are you going to be at the Mental Health Advisory Board meeting this afternoon? Because I'm going to talk a little bit more about it then, if you're interested. Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. Thanks, Janet. Okay, so anything else, Aditi?
Great, thanks. Yeah, these are just, as Scott mentioned, uh just quick next steps uh for folks so that they they sort of understand where we're headed. You know, just based on some of the discussion we had today, we will be finalizing the annual update and will incorporate the public comments. Um, that will be, um, we're hoping to do so by next week, and then that will be sent to the Board of Supervisors. Where Scott will be making his presentation. This will be next month in August. And that essentially will culminate uh this last year of the three year um planning process for Lake County. Anything you'd like to add to this, Scott? Any other?
Well, this is kind of interesting. You know, we've spent the last six months working on this, so it takes quite a bit of time, you know, working, working. Well, this is kind of interesting, you know, we've spent the last six months working on this, so it takes quite a bit of time, you know, working, working with them. You know, as you, as you described earlier, the, the focus groups and, and, and the public meetings and. You know, it takes a long time to gather information and making sure we're getting as much feedback from the community as we can. So it's, I always find it interesting that, you know, so by. December, we'll be working on this again, you know, for the next, and, but the next time, it's, it's a new three-year plan. Um, and so it will, it will be, you know, I guess a little bit larger in endeavor than this past year. This past year was, was an update to another three-year plan, to this current three-year plan, and so, um. You know, next, next year will be, we'll be looking at, um, some, some, maybe some bigger changes.
Thanks, Scott, thanks for chiming in. Great, so this essentially for the most part, um, oh, I see something in the chat. Oh, great, thanks, Jamie, so, um, as you can see here, again, thank you all so much for your participation today. We really appreciate you all logging in, joining us from the Peer Support Centers, um. We really would like to invite you to take part in a very brief survey, uh, where. Would love to hear your feedback or any comments, I had my colleague Jamie drop the link in the chat. So if you're at the Peer Support Centers, you could either fill this up on the iPads, your personal phones, or there are also physical copies that are available to you. Um, we also have the QR code in here, so if folks would like to take, um, pull that up on their phones, please go ahead and do so. Um, and this really, any, we'd love to invite any comments or thoughts and feedback that you have about this entire process. Thank you.
And Camila, do you, do you, as our, is our, do you have any?
Yep.
Other, other words you want to, want to say? She might have stepped away.
I'm sorry, I was actually doing the survey. Um, I, I think I, I don't have anything else to say, other than thank you for, um, you know, just working really well with the new mental. Board and, um, welcoming us, as we're trying to make sure that we're doing our part and hearing all that the community has to say. And, um, just really allowing us to, to be a great part of the community and, and do what we do. And I think it takes us all to, to make this work and make sure that the equity and mental health is, is available to Lake County. And so just want to say thank you on behalf of the Mental Health Advisory Board for a great public hearing this year.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all attending.
Thanks again, thank you all, have a great rest of your day. We have our details up here, in case you want to, um, send us any comments or thoughts. And then also, quick note that the recording and slides will be up on this website, so we will be putting that up fairly soon. Thank you.
We'll send out an email about that.
Yeah.